We'll call the Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call.
Councilmember Karen?
Yeah.
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 Ross?
Here.
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 Mayor Brachek.
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda if there are no changes.
Still moved.
Motion by councilmember Ross and my councilmember Dumbia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. There are no presentations or introductions tonight. We'll move on to approving the minutes of the September 10th, 2024 city council meeting. Anybody have any changes or corrections needed there? With that, I would take a motion and a second to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Von Seuss, second by councilmember Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is nothing on the request to be heard. We'll move on to the shortest consent agenda that I've ever seen. Item 6A through 6C. Anybody have any changes or corrections needed to these three items? If none, I would take a motion and a second to approve.
Mayor Brachek.
Councilmember Ross?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items 6A through...
Second.
Motion by councilmember Ross, second by councilmember Von Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We'll keep on moving into items for discussion because there are no public hearings. So move on ordinance 2024-20, meaning chapter 13, Article 2 of the Fairbois City Code regarding library advisory board, second reading, or to Director James.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. On September 3rd, 2024, the city council approved the first reading of ordinance 2024-20, which amends Article, excuse me, chapter 13, Article 2 of the city code regarding the library advisory board. The city received no comments at that meeting. We haven't received any other comments or made any further changes to the amendments to this ordinance. Tonight's staff are recommending approval of the second reading of ordinance 2024-20 and taking a separate action republication.
Certainly, because we had the presentation two weeks ago. Any questions on this? Okay. With that, I would take a motion and a second.
Mayor Brachek.
Councilmember Von Seuss?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-20.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Von Seuss, second by councilmember Teal, and it is a roll call.
Councilmember Karen?
Boya?
Aye.
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 Mayor Brachek.
Aye. That one passes on second reading. I need a motion and a second to approve a summary publication of ordinance 2024-20.
Still moved.
Motion by councilmember Ross, second by councilmember Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Summary publication passes. We'll move on to ordinance 2024-19, vacate a portion of drainage and utility easement at 2343 14th Street Northeast. Second reading, and order to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. On September 10th, the Fairbois City Council did approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-19, which proposes a partial easement of vacation at 2343 4th Street Northeast. Since then, we've received no comments from the public and made no substantial changes to that ordinance. So we're recommending approval of that second reading for ordinance 2024-19. Additionally, there's the summary publication, which just as a reminder, needs a 5/7 vote at a minimum in order to pass, but we're also recommending summary publication.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions? If none, I would take a motion and a second to approve.
Mayor Brachek.
Councilmember Teal?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-19.
Second.
Motion by Teal, seconded by councilmember Ross. This is a roll call.
Aye.
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 Mayor Brachek.
Aye. That one passes the second reading. Need a motion and a second to approve summary publication of ordinance 2024-19.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Ross, seconded by councilmember Von Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes. We'll move on to ordinance 2024-18, approve a zoning map amendment for 818 8th Avenue Northwest. Second reading, back over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So on September 10th, Fairbois City Council did approve the first reading of ordinance 2024-19, which is a zoning map amendment for 818 8th Avenue Northwest, also known as the water treatment plant. The city received no comments from the public nor made any substantial changes to the ordinance. So we're recommending approval of the second reading of ordinance 2024-19. Also, we are recommending that the summary publication be approved, sort of in the same way that we just did the previous ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis? If none, I would take a motion and a second to approve this on second reading.
Mayor Brachek.
Councilmember Ross?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-19.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Ross, seconded by councilmember Teal, and this is a roll call.
Boya?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Need a motion and a second to approve summary publication of ordinance 2024-18. Motion by councilmember Karen, seconded by councilmember Von Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That summary publication passes. We'll move on to resolution 2024-196, deny variance at 15 3rd Avenue Southwest. Over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. As I'm waiting for my PowerPoint to load, I can at least go through the initial part of this. So the item in front of you is a resolution for denying a variance at 15 3rd Avenue Southwest. The request is made by Corey Newby for property that's formerly known as the Divine Elementary School and Church there on 3rd. Here is a sort of a Google Maps understanding of kind of where this property is. Red Star is where the subject property is versus other places within the city, and here's an aerial of the property. The request by the Appken is actually for two different variances. So first variance is for a front setback for off-street parking and loading areas. The requirement is 10 feet. The Appken is not currently proposing a setback, so the variance would be a full 10 feet. So again, you know, the Appken is proposing zero feet, requirement's 10, so the variance is 10. For curbing, the Appken is not providing or not proposing to provide any curbing to the parking lot, so that includes drives, landscape islands, parking maneuvering areas. But it's no curbing for the new parking lot associated with the property, so the variance would be just no park or no curbing. The Appken has cited a few different things for reasoning behind the variance or behind the two variances. The main one kind of being the historic character of the property as well as its uniqueness, and then the comprehensive plan that is trying to support small businesses, which the applicant is trying to start a retail location for their online business at this location. The Appken also did touch on a few things like traffic flows and drainage, as well as construction disturbance for the neighborhood. You know, generally, when it comes to variances, we're pretty we're pretty focused on a few set criteria that the state has set for all cities within Minnesota as to what we can and can't do regarding variance. This is sort of mimicked within our code. We have to establish that there's something called practical difficulty, and we also have to establish that the request is not done for any economic consideration, or it's not mainly done for an economic consideration that is following our comprehensive plan and that we're not treating this situation any differently than we do any other request brought in front of us. Additionally, the property needs to have some sort of unique aspect of it, whether in terms of the situation that the Appken's trying to rectify by getting this variance, or in that there's something unique about the property. So when we're reviewing it against all those things, what we're finding is that there it's not meeting the minimum requirements in order to be granted a variance. We don't feel like that there are any arguments posed by the applicant that sort of meet the standard for practical difficulty at a minimum. I think additionally, you know, when we're looking at a comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is a guiding vision for the community, and we should be striving to meet that in everything that we're doing, a part of the city. However, when it comes down to it, the ordinances are sort of, that's what we're able to enforce. And so there's really no other way around it. Although this, you know, this was established by previous city councils, what we're working with is essentially a minimum standard set by city council that all developments have to abide by. In this case, it is adaptive reuse of an existing building, but we are looking at something where previously there is not a parking lot. We're trying to put a new parking lot in. It's pretty close to some adjacent residential properties as well, so we're trying to see how well we can make it compatible with those adjacent. The planning commission did initially review this request on September 3rd and then actually continued to their September 16th meeting to provide the Appken some time to provide additional documents, survey that was sort of shown at that meeting, but we didn't really have the ability because we, and I received it before then, to review it in detail. After that meeting, we did receive those documents from the applicant. After reviewing them, it hasn't changed staff's recommendation on the variance. The planning commission did vote unanimously to deny both of the variance requests. So in summary, the requests are inconsistent with the criteria for granting a variance. So we are recommending denial of both of them. A few things to note. So this was a early diagram that we provided as a part of sort of the deliberations by planning commission. So this is how the Appken would be able to meet a 10-foot setback, be able to provide enough space in order to put curbing on the property. This is the applicant's survey, and so a few things to note, you know, a lot of this pavement actually is very, very close to the property line. East side actually extends over the property line into right of way. So, you know, when we're looking at something submitted by the applicant, we're trying to understand a little bit better and sort of match it up. And so this site plan that we received from the applicant is showing how the Appken can definitely meet based off of where these property lines are, how they can meet the 10-foot setback, or they can provide that curbing. So based off of all these things, everything within the report, the findings, we are recommending that you approve the resolution 2024-196, which does deny the requested variances based on the findings. You know, if we do move forward with something where there is an inclination to approve the applicant's request or a version of it, what we ask is that you continue this discussion to the next meeting and provide some direction to me as staff to provide findings or an updated resolution. The Appken is here in order to answer questions.
Councilmember Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, could we go back to the first map you showed us with just the solid line? Solid red line, is that a map from the applicant and what he wanted to do? Yes, that one?
Yes. So this was a, this was an earlier site plan proposed by the applicant.
Okay.
And it's something similar to what was seen perhaps in some concept plans for the rezoning that happened also on this property and some work sessions that I know.
Okay, so that's the request from the applicant. And then if we go to the second map, which shows the green shading, that's the vegetation buffer. This is the city's version of how it could look and still meet the parking.
Yeah, so this is just a concept, you know, green just makes it really easy to understand where that setback is. But yes, correct.
Is there different zonings within the city? Like, because I know there's some commercial commercial properties that have solid surface all the way out to basically the curb. And I'm not the one that comes to mind is the bowling alley, of course, but I know from working with that, that when they redo their parking lot, they are going to have to put in a bumper. They know that. So that's a case of where, yeah, it's been that way, but when they do update it. But are there other examples in the community where there are commercial properties that have solid surface or besides the downtown area?
There
Maybe along 4th Street or is there a different zoning, I guess, as I want to try to just shorten it?
Sure. There's no zoning district and no parking setbacks in any of the zoning districts that allow construction all the way up to the property line, except for perhaps Central Business District downtown. So this property is Zone C2, so it doesn't enjoy that allowance that downtown.
Like I said before, I'm always the one that's trying to figure out a way to say yes, you know, to these requests, but just similar projects have come before us. Prove them without the buffering. Well, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Assuming in the resolutions, just a typo, third paragraph down when you talk about the distance from the property line. A property line where a 30-foot and then you have 10. It's supposed to be 10, both of those?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you. We were talking all the same. Councilmember Teal?
So in one of these things that was submitted below, there's different, there's tons of different options and stuff, right? So his option proposes no green space. Our option proposes the 10-foot setback. And there's an example in here with maybe a five-foot setback was submitted in the, that's in the agenda?
Yeah.
After, like, assuming that we deny this tonight, which I don't know, but we can go back and talk to the applicant about different options and figure out something at that point, right?
Yes, Mayor, and councilmember Teal, yes. So the diagram that you're referring to is actually an earlier one, actually by me, by staff, to sort of demonstrate how someone might be able to put enough parking spaces on the property to make full use of the entire property. I think in this case, the Appken's just wanting to use the country school. And so, you know, when we're thinking about it, you know, it's maybe 50 spaces right there, you wouldn't need to go all the way or as close to the property line. Something where you're a bit farther away, and then eventually, when you're able to use the rest of it, maybe you start with enough parking for that entire site, all on site. I think the justification for that what we're, that's what we're missing from the applicant. I don't think that we're quite there.
Cool. Thank you.
We'll open it up to the applicant if he has any information that is not in our packets already.
It's Corey Newby, 15 3rd Avenue, Southwest. So that right there with the 50 spots, yes, I could get by with using the gym as my retail and the rest of the building as storage for a floor home. So approximately 38,000 square feet is what it's worth. So I need 126 parking spaces. Am I going to be using these, that entire space tomorrow? Absolutely not. But down the road, in order for me to utilize that property, I need some forms of setback put in place. And when we were originally talking back in February about it with that one diagram you brought up, we had
Five-foot setbacks?
With a variance of a smaller parking stall.
All in agreeance to that.
Small stalls suck. If you get some big vehicles, a small front, you get a half vehicle onto a regular sized stall. So out of 38,000 square foot, you have one space per 300 square feet for retailer office, which would be the majority of what that would be. That's 126 parking spaces. Currently, there are no setbacks. And if I continue with no setbacks, I would be able to hit 126 parking spaces. Some of them might have to be considered motorcycle parking up to four spaces.
But that would allow me to.
And per your handout in the agenda today,
City staff? Setbacks?
Are keeping cars away from the public everywhere. I absolutely get it. What's really cool about this is that my property is actually required to have green fencing all the way around it. So not only do I have
Fence going around.
Keep people out of the driveway. I also have guardrails put in place on the property that can be utilized as well to protect that from the right way. As for curbing, my biggest reason for curbing I submitted to him was drainage. I mean, this is a 150-plus year old property. Nobody can deny how important drainage is this year out of everything. Minus my roof, my building stayed really, really dry, so I was really happy with that.
Add curbing.
It changes the drainage. You have some other things like the drainage plant. I would prefer not to change the drainage. That was brought up by the city engineer, changing certain curbing. You change the drainage to a special. I may attempt to have that even in a certain, so how, well, I'm not sure if you know what I mean.
Could get into
A ribbon curbing. So where I was going actually, we talked about the ribbon curbing, whether people still be able to drive over, but it allows some type of direction for the curbing.
Packet.
You know. If a car can't roll or drive over into the parking lot. Again, I would have a fence all the way around the parking lot to eliminate any of that. But what does, if we're
Putting in
A ribbon curbing that's pretty much flat, what are we achieving? What are we accomplishing? The thing that keeps me going with this is that all the neighbors and the community members have been very supportive, and they do not want me ripping stuff out. And I sound like a broken record. I'm always standing on Division 2040's comprehensive plan and everything.
Talking about the goals. Or values.
Jump down to goal number
Or develop
Comprehensive plan that's right, just strong link between economics and that. I mean, that's what we're talking about. It's been that way for, school was built in the 1920s, I believe, redone in 58. Parking lot was put in in 1958. So it's been that way since 1958 with no issues. The fencing's still going to be there. It's going to go from a chain link fence to a privacy fence, so it's going to be even stronger. We have the guards in place, so they won't even, a vehicle couldn't even make it to a fence if it wanted to. You know, again, so it's, yes, I know I could get away with just using it, but why are we putting restrictions on small business? Mr. Ross was kind of talking about other zonings. There's not other zonings, but those setbacks. But I did apply a list of, there's hundreds of properties just within a couple miles of the map, like KFC, that have
All the canon.
Buildings built by city and lake, city and lake, or old buildings, new buildings, new use buildings. There's homes that are now commercial without these setbacks, without fencing, without curbing. So when does it become it's okay for one, but not the other? And I truly do feel that you read section 2-460 requirements for a variance. Out of the seven of them, I hit, I think I hit six of them at least. The historic variance?
Heck of a property, I believe, is one of the historic properties in town. It's been there since 1856. It was not very much applicable, going back to the community vision. One of the things is finding the community center for the downtown area. Do you have one that's good to work for? How can you achieve that? I can't use a church at all. I can't use a house at all. I can't use a second Corey of the
School. I can't use the basement of a school without a variance.
Why?
Why wouldn't you make a small business rip up 10 feet on each side, remove a playground that would have to to possibly go back, refill it in, to hit, hit like out of there, to be able to use the rest of that property? I can't do anything on Division 5. That's two feet. There's, that's the only chunk of grass that's left open on that property is on that north side. There's no way you're doing anything on Division with that still there. So the only option I have to be able to utilize the 75% that's left is the variance. And so I'm here asking you, let me keep it the way it is, not just because economically it works, because it's what the community wants. It's a good thing. It's for the greater good. And at the end of the day, we can't just work efficiently. We need to work effectively for emissions.
Maybe you said if you utilize all the property, you need 196 stalls. 126. Where are you going to fit those?
Would have to
Because even without your variances, you don't need that.
Well, the one hairy first Probably still have to request.
But removing my loading section, having 10-foot back, I should be able to put a full-size row on the west side as well. So I mean, we'd be able to, we'd be able to get it pretty darn close with the motorcycle parking. So with the hunter spaces, with the five-foot variance, remove the five-foot, should allow us to put a whole nother row on the west side there. Which is written in the ordinance that you can text them out and be more like the parking to But I feel we could get really darn close with that one.
But you just said you'd have to remove the two playgrounds.
Which, I mean, I don't want to, but in order to make it work, I would have to.
Thank you. Kind of a related question. I think, Mr. Davis, new parking lot is, what's there now? Is it, is it playgrounds now? The parking lot that he's just
Yeah, I believe it's just a hardtop playground. In fact, there's a playground on the south side, kind of near where that tree is in the diagram. Second and third. The other playground, kind ofitty corner to it.
If they were to build just today playground? Or would it be right away, I guess?
Sure. So playgrounds don't have a setback heated away from the property. So you could put a playground, I suppose, all the way up to the property line. Guess perhaps, if anything, I could think of structure that's part of the playground, that may need to be x amount of feet back. As for the playground itself, as I understand, right? Not familiar with any ordinance.
So it's been a hard-surface playground if it was going to continue to be a playground. Acceptable?
Yes. So I'm trying to make sure that I understand the question. So if, if the Appken were to just leave all of that area be, just not touch it at all, if someone wanted to Be, just not, not touch it at all. If someone wanted to. accommodate parking elsewhere, keep the blacktop playground and the two smaller green space playgrounds. They just wanted to do that.
That's what I'm asking is, if you were going to build, let's say it was still a school and they just wanted to build a new playground there. Guess it would be similar to what Fairville Lutheran School did. They built their playground right up to the sidewalk, Fourth Street there. So if it's a playground or something, they can go right up to. Right of, I don't know. Dr. Duchesne, right up to the right of way, or I'm just gonna say right up to the sidewalk and curb area.
But I.
Because it's parking. Parking aspect requires a buffer.
Sure, yes. Parking requires a buffer. I think part of that is the amount of use that a car has upon hard surface compared to playing.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, you know, the petroleum-based fluids that are leaking. I mean, I realize there's other. Goes back to what I've been trying to. Done for the last four years, and that is, you know, update our UDOs because I think there are situations like this. I certainly don't. You know, in some spaces, the, again, Fairville Lutheran School, the playground, okay, and their parking lot goes right up to the sidewalk. And that's not, not extremely old. That's fairly recent. So the one thing I do sympathize with. A lot of things in our UDO that just. Expensive cost for businesses, and I think. I definitely sympathize with him and I. Wish I had better reasons to say, you know, is it all about the environmental runoff from the leaking oil and stuff? Is that what the buffer is designed to attract before it gets in your cylinder? Why can one situation, why can this situation have a playground and a parking lot right up to the curb? What other situations?
Yeah, and, and I can absolutely answer that. So part of it is perhaps environmental, providing some sort of area for infiltration. I think a few other parts of that, you know, when we're looking at a setback for parking lot, what we're trying to do is encourage cars to not park potentially right up to or over into the right of it. So we're avoiding any issues when it comes to side distance for sidewalks, especially when we start talking ADA. Where a car may drive very close over a parking, over a property line, as a result, may seriously hamper the amount of room that someone in a wheelchair or someone using a sidewalk.
But, but in this case, that's being addressed because there's a fence up.
Sure. Yeah. So the other, the other thing that I was about to hit on would be screening and buffering between properties. So this is another situation where we're looking at a property that's right across the street from residences. And so having some green space there with some shrubs in order to help with things like headlights shining into people's homes, that, that is another reason to have that green. The Appken does have a privacy fence plan, yeah. And that's, that's what I understand from tonight. I am working with the property owner to make sure that, that it's understood, it's not, it doesn't need to be a privacy. I think that there are some, uh, some security concerns that the Appken has brought up, as well as just internally among staff that we're concerned about. Because the code says you need a six-foot tall privacy fence in between commercial properties and residential. If we're looking at everything from older properties to newer properties, that's not how that's been done. I fully understand that and realize now. And so we do have the ability as staff to reduce some of those buffering and screening requirements, which I've, I sent an email to the Appken, made that very clear that we. That on them. But, you know, I don't think that a privacy fence is necessary, but even then, you know, having enough room so that the fence is completely on their property, which it currently is not. That's, that's something that we're, that we're looking to.
Oh, I'd like to hear some of the other council.
Councilmember Dumia.
Yeah, um, why do you make of the Minnesota Department?
Mayor, councilmember Adama, I don't think that I'm including anything on the. This agenda item. I think that there are some DNR comments.
No, MNDOT.
Are there any comments from the DOT on this? Is that what you're asking? Cause I don't see any in the. I, I think you're on the next one.
Oh, yeah. I think he just mentioned that there were no issue from incident around regarding the.
I, you know, councilmembers, I can't verify that. I don't have anything from any residents that's fine with it. We also, you know, we're looking at variances. That's not a criteria that staff is able to look at and make a finding on, residences nearby.
Did any resident, uh, did any member of the community issue of doing?
Up for this item.
This is, this is unique property. On-street parking on the.
Uh, no, uh, councilmember Spooner, it, it doesn't count for them, but it doesn't count against them either, so.
Cause it's a very unique situation that that's very few properties. I am concerned about the fact that curb and gutters. Have a fence up. Are charging through the sidewalk with zero setback. All to stop it is the fence is not. Ten foot. Occam. Five feet, six feet, anything?
Uh, councilmember Spooner, so nothing's been submitted by the applicant. I mean, we've had a lot of conversations with the applicant about this to try to figure out, is there a compromise on it? You have no formal submittals.
I understand that. What type of green space are you talking, talking to a berm? I had headlights a minute ago.
Sure. Uh, it's up to the Appken as to whether or not they want to provide a berm, but it could be shrubs, it could be trees. Um, so we're missing some details from the Appken.
I don't know what type of fence you put in. Trucks these days. I just think there's gotta be some common ground here.
Councilmember Till.
I, I can't agree more with Tom. We, we, we will be able to find a common, common ground. One thing, one thing I thought of is that this space has been good enough for young kids and families for how many years? Do anything to it. Put a parking spaces. So I think, I think we do have to approve this denial, but I do want to find common ground. Help to help. Just my thought. It's been good enough for families for.
If we were to direct staff to work with the applicant. Do we need to table this, or do we deny it? Or do we approve the denial? Restart everything?
Tableting it to a future. That way it's not on record. Right, yeah. So you have to start the whole process over again. My, um, so, so when I look at this property, I look at like BA across the street. They put in a new parking lot, um, five years ago or so. They had to curb it. Sides that weren't. The, and the part, the playground side they had to. But my bigger thought is, is why are we looking? Why are you looking at just the use of one building? Why aren't you looking at your big plan and trying to figure out how to make this all work? If you're gonna, if you're gonna do the work, why do it twice? That's, that's what I'm confused by. Because you know that you've got to have a hundred and twenty-six stalls, but yet you're not looking at that. And so I'm just, I'm just wondering why you're taking this in such small bites rather than looking at everything that you've got and trying to move forward so that you can, you're already in a spot where you don't have to come back and ask again.
Oh, so I, I completely understand. Don't get these variances. I have to go, I need to open. Get the system. And in order for me to have these other companies move in and utilize the space as well to use the church for a convention, community center, whatever it may be, I need these variances. And if I don't get them now, I have to rip off blacktop, put in the curbing to go back and put blacktop in, remove the curbing, put a new curbing in, remove the landscaping that I just had to put in. And with the screening and landscaping, again, that's the same concept as the parking lot going right up to the road, not having a curb. Napa would be a good example of it. The landscaping's the same thing. I have so many more plantings that are needed per ordinance. They're not right in the parking lot. We talked about BA, they didn't put any new plantings in there. And they got like seventeen plantings for three acres. So there's all these other properties I've sent to list that aren't meeting these landscaping requirements either. I'm looking ahead because I say this is my first phase, second phase, third phase, and I'm behind already. So my first and second phase kind of need to start merging together. So I need to find a way to utilize more stuff. I start producing income on that first level, I have no problem putting an elevator into up to the second level. That adds ten thousand square feet. So then every time, if I don't get a variance now, I'm coming back more often to the second level, to the second level. Parking stalls with this variant. Open it would add a whole nother. Guys want to come up with a solution where. Off-street parking. Guys are willing to work on other options where maybe he doesn't need that. Fifty spaces to utilize the entire school would be enough, but it's not enough per year. I've brought up to the police staff, if I don't like you very much, but I've brought up, hey, how come you aren't, you know, look at these. Ordinances to these. Really makes sense. Why aren't we changing, why aren't we updating the ordinance to make, to make things work? And there should be some definite things seen with developers. I'm, I'm open to working. Those are movable. Open figuring out a compromise. Property.
Um, for Director Duchesne, we wanted to table this and talk about it further. Would we do that, or should we continue to deny the? You know what I'm trying to get at? Deny the request and discuss it more.
You have either option. You can certainly table it if you want to discuss it at your work session next week on the first. Prepare something to come back for your meeting on the eighth. We'll note that. Talking, mind if you deny the variance, the applicant cannot come back for the exact same variance in twelve months. He could come back with, you know, five foot setback.
That would also cost money, correct? It'd cost him more money to come back.
Yeah, there's, there's an app, there's an application fee for the.
Table it's the way to go.
Spooner and then you. Just so the applicant knows, the general public out there knows, one thing that always makes me nervous about variance. Fact that if we grant this, zero setback, already rezoned it, here, he goes, this space ain't big enough, or this space ain't leaving. He moves, he goes somewhere else in town, this variance stays with him. That's why we look to the future. Actually, you have to look at it. I would rather give you a variance for the number of plantings or the number of parking lots. Pickup truck backed up into the. That's where I'm at.
Um, looking in the history of this, I guess I want to make this clear and also, you know, make this clear because I think. It will be for, so, um, if, if you are willing to work with planner, the staff to make sure you guys comes to a compromise. Because whatever we seeing here, I think is just, they are just doing their job. Um, is exactly what need to be done. The only issue maybe was the tab or in the reports, otherwise, uh, you qualify for deniers, so. My point is, because this has been tabled before and there, there wasn't much change either. So it seems like somebody don't want to compromise here. So, uh, if we are tabling this. You should be aware that you, you will have to work with staff to make sure things are. They are just doing their.
You know, I would love to sit down with the work session with you guys and figure, get things pinned down so you guys got better stuff to do than keep dealing with me. So I mean, I want to get this pinned down so I can move on and so I can start contributing to the community. So I mean, I'm, I'm fine. I've waited this long, tabling it for another week's not gonna kill me, so I mean, I would love to hear. Sit down and talk with you guys about what you would want to do.
Think it would be best if you work with. They are the one. Just my opinion because if you come to us, you will still go back to the. Probably.
Table that I did request to Harry that what if we change it to two and a half foot setback? With the curving things in there, I was hoping that would get, you know.
Put in there and see what.
The city planners would, would say to that. But again, most of them were against it because they were against it going to spot zoning, going to C2. So what was the point of zoning on C2, of course, not gonna work with the property. So again, fifty.
Over Karen.
Well, I think it's great that we're gonna compromise and maybe work on it and all of that. The only thing that I keep coming back to my mind is that. That road and with Bethlehem Academy and all the traffic that that road sees, and I think that goes back to safety for me as well. I don't know that on-street parking would be an option. Gets, I also can't help but think of the residents in the area. Is a unique situation. It is a unique neighborhood. I think it probably is gonna have to have some kind of area that's involved. Neatness, so. I'm just grateful that we're gonna be able to move ahead and find something that'll work.
Comments before we. So, so. Okay, I'd like to make one. Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So if I had to vote on this today, I would, I would deny it. The green spaces are, are a part of pride in our community. Green spaces are warm and inviting. Pavement up to property lines is harsh and, and very intimidating. You provided a long list of properties. Yep, you even threw Mercury, Minnesota on there that hasn't made an update to their building in 75 years. So I throw out your whole list because it's, it's not essential to any of us. You, you didn't look at the history. But, um, curb, curbing gives us water flow, which helps us with our MS4 prints, which helps us with all kinds of other issues that we have that uh, happen when we get torrential rains. And so, the, the, the 10-foot buffer space provides that enhancement space, so. We need to really look at those items. Find a compromise. Also, Governor Ross.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Okay, in a motion by Councilman Ross to table this item, seconded by Councilmember Von Seuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This item is tabled. Mr. Davis will be in contact. Alright, uh, let's see. We'll move on to City of Faribault, J&amp;J Properties Comprehensive Plan Amendment, zoning map amendment. There's two resolutions here, which.
Mayor, council members, uh, so the next item in front of you is actually two different resolutions, one to deny a comprehensive plan and one to deny zoning map amendment. So the applicant is City Faribault. Um, we did take this on after some discussion at a planning commission work session. Taking on this, this rezoning. Uh, the initial application was by J&amp;J Properties. For a location of the 500 and 400 blocks of 20th Street Northwest on the north side, right across from the fairgrounds. Like I said, the proposal is for a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning map amendment for some existing properties, residential properties, uh, as well as a future residential property. Sort of bank of, of properties, six properties. So here's where they are. Um, the fairgrounds are just to the south of the subject property. Uh, denoted by the red star. The aerial, um, on this slide, and so, um, you can just barely see where the property that's in the middle, um, of the, of the bank of six, that's a vacant property that the applicant owns. Initial applicant owns. Wanted to do residential for development there. The existing residential is actually flanking either side of the property along. The request is for a future land use designation from industrial to established residential neighborhood and for a rezoning uh, from I-2 to R-2 low-density residential. So that would be industrial to resolution kind of a. And here's what that would look like, um, in terms of a comprehensive plan reguided area for these six properties. This would be what the zoning map would look like if these properties were zoned. So, um, to give you some of the background, so like I had mentioned before, uh, back in August, when we uh, were bringing this project through the development review process, uh, I suggested that perhaps we take this to a planning commission work session to get a better idea about this particular property because coming out of DRC, staff was actually on the fence, uh, as to whether or not to support requests by the applicant. So we took it to a planning commission work session and we received, uh, what we had understood at the time to be kind of positive. Positive support towards the rezoning as long as it included more than just that. Property by the initial applicant, J&amp;J Properties. So because we started to include some additional properties nearby, uh, we started to look at this as, oh, this is actually kind of more of a. Not quite a, a city effort per se, but more of a larger issue. And so really, that's more of something that city council can do, so that ends up being something that city staff takes over. So that's kind of why we're here or how we got here. What is, uh, you know, kind of from there is that, that at the September 3rd planning commission meeting, uh, planning commission actually debated on this for, I think, about an hour or so, uh, trying to go back and forth, and I think planning commissioners. At, at different viewpoints depending on where they were. Um, sometimes from the same commissioner. At the end of the day, they voted actually four-two to deny both requests. In fact, there was a tie vote at one time. It was brought back in order to get a affirmative vote. Up or down. So city staff brought to their next meeting, September 16th, uh, planning commission, a new set of findings and resolutions that were consistent with their denials. So at that meeting, it was another four-to-two vote. Uh, the dissenting commissioners were, uh, taking the stance of what the planning commission during that August work session was, was feeling, which was a bit more of a positive look at the request, looking at some of the existing residential in the neighborhood and seeing the industrial zoning as being a burden on that residential development, that existing residential. It is. Uh, but generally, when we're looking at the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan is supposed to be the guide for the future, and so when we're looking at this overall area, it is transitioning from residential to industrial. We actually got at the September 3rd planning commission. Member of the public stating that they have interest in expanding their nearby industrial company and industrial business. That by rezoning this and regiding this, that would actually hamper their efforts in order to expand. So we heard that loud and clear and understood it, and so, you know, looking at previous comp plans, this area is always intended to be for transition into industrial. Current comp plan shows that as well, but we understand that as this is what we're intending it to be. Same with rezoning, you know, so rezoning looks a little bit more at compatibility for existing and proposed uses, so it's a little bit more of a deeper dive. Um, but when we're looking at industrial zones, um, and that being right next to residential zones, the way that we have our industrial zoning right now is that it's set up, it's either based off of the zoning district or that use of the property. And if either one of those is residential, there are enhanced burdens placed at adjacent industrial. And so, you know, right now, those burdens are in place, but in the situation where a business might acquire a bunch of these different properties and try to string them together to do a full industrial redevelopment or some, some sort of industrial business, this would hamper that ability on the periphery to development on these. As, as I stated before, the comprehensive plan sees this as a transition over time from residential to industrial. So, you know, taking a look at the future as well as understanding some of the burdens within the present. And in one way, which is what one of the planning commissioners ended up being, uh, at least the deciding vote for them, is that looking at these properties, how they would become an island within industrial, uh, there are some concerns about spot zoning. That's something that has been talked about at the state level, uh, quite a bit, and there is a lot of legal. Different litigation out there on spot zoning. But I think, you know, generally focusing more on, is this the right thing for the future? It doesn't appear to be the right thing for any of the business owners that may want it. Currently there, it wouldn't be. So we are recommending that. I both the requests. We don't feel like that it meets the amendment requirements either for a comprehensive plan amendment or for a zoning map amendment. So we have two resolutions for you. First one would be Resolution 2024-197. Recommending that the city council approve that, which denies the request of comprehensive plan amendment. Second one would be Resolution 2024-198, which recommending city council approve, which would deny the zoning map amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Questions on this? Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. I always like to be very careful about these because we're approving a denial. In my little childlike ways here, I want to make sure that I understand. The applicant is asking. Own those six lots. Two. R-2 development. Low-density.
Yes.
Which case it could not be built on for commercial or industrial.
That'd be correct.
My opinion is, is that this area should remain commercial. I would. Would be in favor of approving the denial. Want to make sure, because it's always a reverse, so I always want to make sure that I know. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
I'm, I'm also against rezoning these residential. Uh, first of all, I don't like having driveways on highways. It's always silly to me. And secondly, you would have a row of houses that's sandwiched in between a racetrack that gets activated hopefully more and more often. Sure, so that the race track playground survives, and an industrial behind them, so you're gonna have these houses that are constantly bombarded with noise and smells. And who really wants to live there? I mean, that's just a, a, a low-budget housing situation, for lack of better words. Probably better than a cardboard box, but not by much. And I don't, I don't want to see this because they, they would, they would be in a, in a spot that I would not want to be. And then, if we were to make these housing and any of the businesses around them were to, uh, were to change their property, they would be hindered because they would have to add extra screening, they would have to do all this extra stuff to their own industrial property that they wouldn't if it was still zoned.
I agree with you, but I, I can't help but think of the ones, the houses in that little residential tract that's behind Casey's. Is that the same kind of predicament, or, because it, it seems like it's kind of sandwiched between Dyken and what you're talking about, so is, is that, oh, sorry, that also?
There's a lot less driveways there. If you think about who's there, there's only a couple on the east side, and then there's, um, some twin homes that share one driveway. Otherwise, there's very few driveways on the west side.
But there is that pocket of, you know, it's like a one-way or maybe just a little cul-de-sac back there, right, of housing? Is that all residential as well? It is zoned residential?
Yep.
Why wouldn't we change that then to?
Because it's already residential.
And nobody's asking us to do anything different.
Right. Yep. Oh, uh, uh, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, oh, I see, I see, there's our corner.
Yep.
Thank you.
It was there.
Thank you, I saw it, thank you.
Spooner.
I know that the race track was already complained by one of the residents across the street, and went from half mile to quarter mile. And a lot of people have been upset about that because of the business not getting their rights. And I know what's happening. I've seen this before. I've seen before where people buy a house next to an airport, and then they file a complaint that their airport is too close to their house. So that is why I don't want to lose business. I know it's a joke, but.
Councilman Spooner, are you thinking an apartment building or apartment development where that racetrack is?
Oh, I have your community center.
Oh, boy. Peter, your track is fine.
Councilmember Teal.
Uh, that was your fault, Mr. Spooner. So, yeah, I, I agree. I think we have to keep it industrial. The one thing that I can't get out of my mind is our need for. So hard for me. Perfect spot for a little house, portable for someone. Works anywhere. That's the only thing I can't get out of my head, but I am gonna vote.
You would want your kids that are living there playing Highway 3 or in a.
No.
History? I mean, you gotta, you gotta think about what's the neighbors.
I, I understand. I'm gonna vote in favor of the denial, but that's what I can't get out of my head, so.
I agree, but there's lots of, lots that are ready to go. Have any idea how many lots are available?
Well, with the opening of Twin Oaks north of the New York City, 50 Center. South of 100.
There's, there's lots of better places. For the better quality of life. Alright, I think we're all in, uh, favor on where we're going with this one, so if somebody wants to get this started, with the Resolution 2024-197?
Veratchek.
Councilmember Von Seuss.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-197. Deny.
Perfect. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Von Seuss, seconded by Councilmember Ross. Resolution, so I get it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is approved for a denial. We'll move on to Resolution 2024-198.
Veratchek.
Councilmember Von Seuss.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-198. Deny a zoning map amendment.
Motion by Councilmember Von Seuss, seconded by Councilmember Aaron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. We'll move on to Resolution 2024-194, rescinding and replacing Resolution 2024-177 and adopting the 2025 preliminary tax levy establishing the budget meeting date. Over to Director Duchene.
Thank you, Mayor Veratchek, and members of the council. Uh, before you tonight is a resolution to replace the resolution that adopted as the mayor tax levies for the city, the HRA, and the EDA at your previous council meeting on September 10th. All the information presented at the meeting was accurate and is unchanged in this resolution. However, there was a typo in the resolution proposed 2025 tax levy amount. 14 million dollar range. Levy amount that was presented in that council was, according on, was actually 13,798,573 dollars. Caught when the county was going to certify by the resolution. Tax systems for the north. the tax systems for the north. This resolution simply cleans up a typo in the previous resolution. All the information that was presented at the meeting reflected this 13 million, 798, 000 dollars. Can't for any other questions, but this is just.
Thank you, Director Duchene. Any questions on this clerical error? Okay. Motion, seconded to approve, Councilmember Spooner.
Mayor, I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024.
Second.
I got a motion by Spooner, seconded by Councilmember Ross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it passes. We'll move on to Resolution 2024-195, approving credit card use policy amendment. Back over to Director Duchene.
Thank you, Mayor Veratchek, members of the council. Before you tonight is an amendment to the city's credit card policy. Basically, we're adding our utility and street superintendents, as well as the city clerk, to approved carriers of city credit cards. Their positions line up with other positions. Everybody else in the world, more and more people are requiring credit cards, and folks are going to conferences, auto, how long where they require hotel, they require a credit card to be able to file. Questions? Adding.
Councilmember Ross.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It seems like about, we did this about four years ago, and we had a limit of $5,000. Is that just for directors?
Correct.
So because this cardholder is not a director, that.
No further questions? Somebody can make a motion.
Mayor Veratchek.
Ross.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-19.
Second.
Got a motion by Ross, seconded by Councilmember Dumia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now it passes. Move on to resol, uh, moving into the bids, we'll move on to Resolution 2024-193, reject bids for a straight river water main crossing contract 2023-09, over to Director Duchene, acting as Director Duchene.
Before you tonight is a little bit of an anomaly. I'm recommending that we reject all bids received for the Straight River Water Main Crossing Project. As you recall, this is a project to replace the current 20-inch water main that carries the water from the water treatment plant up to the east side reservoirs. Water main goes underneath the Union Pacific Railroad, comes up on the east side of the railroad, and then is attached to the bottom of the second avenue. Brake on that water main between the railroad and the riverbank that was very problematic to get repaired and costly. Proposed Viaduct Park Development, we said this is the time to look at replacing that critical piece of infrastructure, so we put together the bids, sent them out. Unfortunately, last, on Wednesday, September 4th, we only received two bids. The low bid coming from Pembroke Companies out of Wisconsin. However, there is a clerical error in their bid, and they have asked to have their bid drawn. Second bid came from Hazleton Construction. Both bids were over the consulting engineer's estimate by a significant amount. We are recommending that we reject all bids and reject the project and reflect the increased project prices in an updated budget for 2025. That's the water utility fund. This project will get rebudgeted as a 2025 budget. There, there's funds available to complete the project. I just feel like guarantee we'll get better bids, but based on the low bidder not being responsive, the next bidder being 38% lower.
Director Duchene. Questions?
I just have one. Um, so, and we wanted to do this with the Vida. Going to affect that later?
No. So originally, we started this thinking when we were going to build all three phases or all three bid packages of Vida Park with the ice feature. This is basically where the traffic circle is there northeast of Crooked Pint. All the work is up in there, so none of the current work with the park and the bid packages that have been awarded would be affected by this. We rebid this this winter, and then the work is done next spring. Of the work that really quickly forward with an ice feature.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mayor Veratchek.
Councilmember Ross.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-19.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ross, seconded by Councilmember Teal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are rejected. Any boards, commission reports, announcements, or project updates? Director Duchene, could you give us a brief update on the status of the dam at the Wallenmill?
Sure. So since the partial wing wall failure on the north side of the Wallenmill Dam, the city did make an emergency repair to stabilize the dam. Staff has been monitoring that repair. Riprap that was placed to stabilize the dam. Further evidence of addition. Structures, so some water. But since that time, we, we did have the kickoff meeting with Homeland Security Emergency Management from the state of Minnesota, go four weeks ago or so. Off, here's the process that's going to come at you, be ready for it. Staff has since then been waiting to have our actual project meeting with the project manager that will get assigned to us. The fire chief just made contact, got contacted by that person. But once we get some discussion going with FEMA on what our options are for repairing or replacing whatever the dam failure and understand what our funding sources may or may not be, or with a permanent fix, but in the interim, started conversations with some consulting engineers, look at some fixes, we're just waiting to kind of understand what our options are better with FEMA being rolling for. Well, I, I will give you a preview. This is also a topic where I work.
You know, with the, the big flea market sale out there and the Mills Heritage event kickoff, lots of people were noticing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, just the last time we'll be on tape. Over Fifth is a huge day of the day of Riverbed Nature Center. We got stuff going on all day long. Open house with the fire department. All festival chili cooked on.
Looking at my calendar to see if I had them all wrote down. And this last week, they just had the ribbon cutting at Twin Oaks, that housing development. They're getting started there, and up two weeks is the cutting for the Public Safety Center. With that, I would take a motion, a second to a journalist. Somebody's got something else?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dumia, seconded by Councilmember Teal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Good night and good luck.